All right. We called, we see all means order. We did say the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, let the record be pledged. That move did start at six oh through two, three, and all board members are present. Uh, student representative information. Go ahead.
One act play competed on Thursday, February 6th and brought back a star performance trophy. Speech was at Hibbing on Saturday and got fifth place. There is JV meet tomorrow here and a varsity meet on Saturday in McGregor. There is no school Friday, February 14th and Monday, the 17th. A representative from UMD will be here on Thursday, February 20th. Tomorrow at four, there is a boys' swim meet in Hibbing. The combined Virginia-Evelyn-Gilbert boys' swim team went to true team state recently, and the United team took 11th there. Tomorrow, there is a boys' basketball game here. On Friday at six, there is a boys' hockey game at St. Thomas Academy. The new school name is Rock Ridge. The mascot is the Wolverines. The new school colors are black, green, white. Many of the students and community members are excited about the announcement.
Thank you. Six point oh visitor.
Is that about five point oh?
I mean, five point oh. Agenda additions and deletions if you have any.
I got some. First one is consent agenda A, improvements in our meeting Monday, December 13, 2010. I'm gonna guess that you don't need to prove the minutes for December 13, 2010 anymore. Might've been done a lot more. I do have a good story behind that. I, uh, Deb and I work in Google Drive and I put everything together in a folder and she called me about a half hour later. She says, "Oh my God, all things disappeared." So I was typing frantically for the next two hours. That ended up in there.
You said December.
All was well. We just don't need to do that. Consent agenda A can be lifted.
Mine says improvement into the regular meeting on Monday, December 9, 2019.
Now, all that, all of that needs to be eliminated now. Consent agenda is.
So B through I will say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, on 11.1, I wrote the wrong amount on there. It says four days a week at 16.65 an hour. It's actually 15.84 from that particular position. 15.84.
Motion carries 10.0. Uh, items removed from the consent agenda. Jeff, what do you do there? I mean, just to prove that the item A was a misprint or?
No, that was, uh, that was removed under additions and deleted. So the item removed by the consent agenda would be a board member choosing to have a discussion on one of the items.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask a question though? Just, just for clarification. Consent agenda about the resignations of the track coaches. Will we have to take actions at this point to post and advertise or to fill those positions? And if it's under consent agenda, you just write like this.
I was thinking we would talk about it on the new business. There was an approved for the co-op. I had some questions about that. I was just getting asked them about when we have the approve the co-op for the girls and boys' track as far as the coaching plans. It's for seven through 12 grade.
Oh, that's nice.
All right. Moving on, right? 11.0 personnel approve the lower rate for the ACSE per professional position with the change in the hourly rate from 16.65 an hour to 15.84 an hour because of whatever reason that was changed at the time.
All right, no, no.
Okay. All right, so I get a motion on that?
I'll move.
All support.
Say their support by Director Yohan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. 12.0 new business. Approved second reading of policies.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have three policies that were at first reading at the January meeting, and that is 103 complaints, 206 public participation, board meetings, and the 510 extracurricular. No one did suggest the changes at first reading, so maybe they are the same as they were
So can I get a motion to approve the second reading of policies? Please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Lotiger. Support by Director Addy. Any discussion?
On these policies, now is it accurate that we went back to the pervage of the MSBA model policy?
Mr. Chair. On 206.
What about complaints and 510?
103 is MSBA. 510 was modified by us slightly.
So 103 and 206 are MSBA model language?
Any more discussion?
In, in the board book, the only policy that I'm seeing on here is 206.
Chair, with your quick info, otherwise, um, no, Deb's going to print it.
The, uh, 103 and 510?
Mm-hmm. Kind of move on to 12.2 and we'll just come back to it.
Okay. The 12.2, uh.
Can you take notes for a little bit?
Okay, 12.2, approve resolution number 703, accepting donations.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is a donation from Access Broadband for $1,000. What happened is, uh, when we sit, was reviewing the water tower, the summer access broadband asked if they could put their antenna on top of one of our light posts in the football fields and kindly gave us $1,000 for a bunch of programs.
We thank them. Okay, so the, so approve resolution number 703, will recall a, will require a roll call?
Would you like a reading of it or no?
Uh, we don't have a reading. Cancel. Roll call, Director Shaver.
Mm-hmm. Director Gennawini?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Saether, is a yes? Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schubert?
Yes.
And Director Yuhan?
Yes.
Resolution 703 passes with seven yeses and zero no's.
All right, very good. So does everyone go back to?
I don't have them. I can't get them off of here.
Um, Ed, can you print those out?
If I, she shares them with me, I can print them out.
Oh, sure. You can pay it with your card.
Okay, so 12.3.
And what did that say?
12.2, approve girls' track co-op with Virginia.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is, uh.
I mean, 12.3, excuse me.
This is agreement to share track teams with Virginia school this time of season. Um, the track folks got together and tried to begin their best interest to do so. Unfortunately, the thing is neither of us have a track from track season, so. As far as the coaching that was brought up earlier, we are gonna go with the plan that was laid forward, co-coaches, and continue to pay the people. So yes, we would need to foster replacements of the ones that need to resign.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve on 12.3, approve the girls' track co-op with Virginia?
Would it be in line to make a motion to approve 12.3 and 12.4 at once?
Jeff, can we read 12.4 and 12.5?
It's up to you guys. It's, uh, the next one is just.
I mean, 12.4 and 12.5.
12.3.
Three, four, and five.
No any difference. It's all the same. It's the same as what is.
Hmm?
Three and one.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll move 12.3.
Okay. Move by Director Schubert.
Support.
Support by Director Shaver. Any discussion?
I have a question on both of them, so. On the application, um, the enrollment for nine through 12 of both districts is not filled in, and as part of the application process, I might have to do with, you know, tiers or something?
Um, in a co-op, you go with the host school plus, is it half the co-op school?
Population.
So it won't affect class in this instance.
Host school plus half of the what?
Half of the, uh, dragon school.
The cooperating, if there's two or three or four more, it's half of each one of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so maybe those numbers should be filled in because it's part of the form?
I probably isn't aware of our situation, so. But yes, they will.
Any more discussion on 12.3?
Might there be a change in that qualification for cooperating sports as far as how you count the host school plus half of the cooperating schools?
Mm-hmm.
There any, I understand there might be some change in how you count students for what division you're in?
Not this year.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, is there some potential change?
I've heard there's things being considered, but that wouldn't be this year.
That's what I just heard too. All right.
Any more discussion on 12.3? Okay.
Only with that, he said we'd have to post, so where are we going to take that action to post for the resignations? We could make that part of this motion?
I'm just gonna ask if we can amend the motion with the postings. They think it was one girls and one boys.
Do you typically approve postings for coaches?
Yes.
For.
It's not a new position. It's a replacement position.
We've got a whole.
There are times when I will because, like, for instance, well, this is a good example. So in this one, in E, we had a junior head track coach that resigned. That is a position that was shared between boys and girls, and it was just because of numbers last year. It is not a position that we typically have had. We typically have a head coach and an assistant. Depending on, that's not something I would ask you tonight to repost because we don't know about numbers, and we're also combining with all Virginia's coaches, so pretty good chance we don't need it. Whereas the, the second one down, the boys' JV track coach, that one does need to be posted and replaced.
Should we make that part of that motion then when we get to it?
That's fine.
So 12.3, 12.3, we got a motion by Director Schubert, support by Director Shaver, and the discussion is that we want to post and advertise for a girls' track.
Uh-huh. Or just for the boys?
Just for the boys.
So it's just the motion as is.
Okay.
And just one more comment or question on, on 12.3. Uh, the cooperative agreement and co-coaching, you said about co-coaching. There was a situation with swimming.
That is not the case in this instance.
It wouldn't be the case?
They're getting along fine and excited to work together.
Okay, we thought that, we thought that before too, but, um, as I understand it, if just one coach does not want to coach with the other coach, then that, that triggers the opening of the positions to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if we might not want to revisit that language because that gives, it's not that both of them agree that they can't, they don't want to coach together. One can decide, one will say, "I'm fine with coaching," the other one says, "I'm not," and.
Director, getting off the agenda.
We talked about co-coaching, and there's a, there's a discussion to be had if.
I think that'd be up to the, to, to the activities director, to which I believe she had worked out some language, and I thought it was very good language.
Approved by all three boards, so I mean, I think we would have to go back to all three boards for review.
That's, my point was maybe we might want to do that.
Any more discussion on 12.3? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 12.4.
Uh, same deal, just for boys, and I guess I would recommend that you, in conjunction, approve, uh, posting of a JV coach.
So can I get a motion to approve the boys' track co-op with Virginia with the posting of a boys' track coach?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Addy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 12.4, approve the teacher seniority list.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, uh, this is coming at the board a little later than it normally does because they're, you spent extra time going through it because of some kind of matters because this could be the consolidation thing. Seniority list, so it was vetted by both sides, and both are satisfied that it is accurate, so I recommend we approve it.
Support.
Move by Director Sorkin, support by Director Lotiger. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 12.6, accept fiscal year 2019 audit report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Director Nissen came and presented to the board in January an audit report, and the board will be able to ask questions. At that time, I recommend that you approve it at this minute.
Can I get a motion to accept the fiscal year 2019 audit report?
I'll move.
Move by Director Saether.
Second.
Second by Director Schubert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 12.7, resolution 704, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
This is a resolution that happens, uh, usually actually at the second January meeting, but since it's at the first February meeting, that just begins the budgeting process. The laws of, laws of business office start looking at all our programs and positions. Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna reduce anything, but it's just the authority to look at.
So can I get a motion to approve 12.7? I'll move. To set to approve 12.7.
Support.
Support by Director Saether. Any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, Joe, excuse me. So it's a roll call vote, so. Say that I get a roll call vote, please.
You can. Would you like it read?
Yes.
Resolution 704, you want it read? Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the final condition of the school district dictates that the school must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas this reduction in expenditures must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teacher contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits affecting discontinuance of positions. Roll call, Director Gennawini?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Saether is a yes? Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schubert?
Yes.
And Director Yuhan?
Yes.
And resolution 704 passes with seven yes and zero no's.
Okay, moving on. 12, uh, 12.8, approve purchase of track school course.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so we're gonna need combination, and we have names and colors and mascots. No, we're recommending that we start the purchase and transformation. The municipal name and colors, um, we'd rather not do it all at once. We'll build it open so we can do a little at a time. And we're tasked with track uniforms tonight to $15,100. To relate that, if you're asking the Virginia school, we're gonna approve the warmups for the track team as well, and we got to sell it, and, you know, part of the project is most recommended we start doing this.
I think great idea to start now. I, I do think that we should, and just kind of keep a running total of what each district is, and I'm not questioning, but we, 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 we should know what each respective district is contributing to.
15, 6 on the warmups.
Right, but I mean, this is just the start.
One, yeah.
We're gonna be doing this, hopefully this is the last time to do this, but we may be doing this in separate boards moving forward. Let me know.
So can I get a motion to approve 12.8?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Yuhan.
Support.
Support by Director Lotiger. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.9, accept the commission's report on consolidation.
I actually changed the, changed the verbiage on this to approve resolution 705 adopting the consolidation and approve plan and approve plan. You have a resolution in front of you?
I make motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion by Director Schubert, support by Director Saether. Roll call.
Yes, would you like to read the resolution, Scott?
Yes.
Any, well, any discussion?
Discussion would be first.
Yeah.
My name is Mr. Chair, let's start the discussion. Um, just so everyone is aware, so, uh, Thursday of this week, we will meet with the Virginia Board to discuss, uh, a potential public vote, whether or not, because at this point, uh, we will, if this is passed tonight, we will, we will post, uh, this to the official newspaper, and the day that goes in the paper, the 30-day clock starts, and it'll be 30 days for any of the boards to decide to send it to a public vote, or it can be sent to a vote by a public petition. So on Thursday, we'll have the discussion of the Virginia Board, as direction you want to go. Depending on that, either way, next, following week, on the 19th and 20th, we will have public meetings on consolidation, while representatives from Hila is there to explain the financial impact of consolidation. Uh, we do also have a presentation of what that will look like, um, take feedback from the community. Over those two nights, it'll be day meetings, it'll be afternoon meetings, and there'll be night meetings in both communities, all three communities, all right? And after that, depending on what happens Thursday, the Board could either act on the 24th to approve a public vote or not. If that what sounds like.
So the three, the, the three meetings you're gonna have, I mean, six meetings you're gonna have, one Gilver, one Evelyn, one?
Every, every day there'll be one in each community.
Each community, okay. Any more discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Would you like me to read the resolution or no?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Resolution number 705, approving the consolidation plan and approve plat. Whereas on May 14, 2019, voters in Evelyn Gilbert and Virginia approved a 181 million educational collaborative project that would include a combined seventh through 12 high school and two elementary schools. And whereas on August 12, 2019, the Board of Education of Independent School District 2154 approved a resolution to initiate the process under Minnesota statute 123A.48 to consolidate with Independent School District 706. And whereas on October 30 of 2019, the Virginia-Evelyn Gilbert Public Schools sent a joint letter to the Department of Education regarding the intent to consolidate. And whereas the October 30 of 2019 joint letter contained a plan for existing debt and referenda bonds, a school board consolidation plan, an administrative structure plan, and staff development plan. And whereas pursuant to Minnesota statute 123A.48 subdivisions 2, C, and 5, the St. Louis County Auditor prepared a plat and supporting statement for the consolidated district. And whereas on December 13, 2019, pursuant to Minnesota statute 123A.48 subdivision 6, the St. Louis County Auditor submitted the plat and supporting statement for the consolidated district to the Commissioner of Education. And whereas on January 29, 2020, pursuant to Minnesota statute 123A.48 subdivision 8, the Commissioner of Education endorsed and approved the plat and supporting statement for the consolidated district. And whereas the approved plat and supporting statement of the consolidate, consolidated district is attached to this resolution as exhibit A. And whereas pursuant to Minnesota statute 123A.48 subdivision 10 and the Board of Education's August 12, 2019 resolution, the respective school boards of ISD 2154 and ISD 706 must either approve or reject the plan as proposed in the approved plat.
I'm not even, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Gennawini? Director Sorkin?
No.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Saether is a yes? Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schubert?
Yes.
Director Yuhan?
Yes.
The resolution 705 passes with five yes votes and two no's.
All right. 12.0, or 12.2, or 12.10. 12.10 is the negotiating committee discussed with all board committees, right?
12.10 is all board committees.
All board committees.
Yes. We'll switch that.
Okay, so, I know.
I'm sorry. So typically, we, we appoint somebody to the athletic committee, appoint somebody to the safety committee, we appoint a negotiations committee. You may decide that you want two separate negotiations committees. Almost everything else is all work. It is all work. That's what you've done. If you want to separate that out and have smaller ones, you can have a discussion.
I didn't say that 12, uh, 12.10 was just a discussion item, correct? Am I right? Am I?
The initial request was appointment for the negotiation, and Holly had requested that, um, looking at for all board committees because we did not officially fill some of the committees that we do have a membership of.
And I'm looking at our current, we have, we have a lot of committees currently from last year, um, more than what you just delineated, Jeff, and, um, trying to find them, but it's on our school website. And, um, usually at a reorganizational meeting, the board chair and the members either say, "I'd like to stay on the same committees," or "I'd like to be on different committees," and then it's officially done, adopted, appointed, whatever. We haven't done that. I, I guess at this point in time, since we didn't have another discussion, I say we keep the same ones, uh, if anybody wants to change or be off or whatever, and, uh, yeah, you pulled them up there, uh, like you got them before I did. And so we really should deal with this. It's been over a month since a reorganization meeting. And as far as having separate, go ahead.
There was a, I think I requested, Jeff, did we get the list to everybody?
I did.
And then we just signed on where we want to be on that?
No.
And if nobody signs, and if nobody signs on a particular, then it become a board of the whole, correct? Right? Or was everything?
Well.
Well, here, I mean, what you've done before, Holly, there's a couple of those.
Yes, a lot, a lot others. To put this on the agenda at this time, as far as just one committee, but now we're talking about all board committees, all board members have not had that chance to, to give that feedback of what committees they want to be on. All board members have not had that chance to, to give that feedback of what committees they want to be on or don't want to be on. I think it's a little premature.
I think this committee that, from earlier today, I think the committee was for the Joint Powers Board. That was that committee that was formed over there for purposes of negotiating.
I don't think it was for the Joint Powers Board, and I don't think that a committee was formed over there. I may not, what, what, what I took that was, is an informal group of two members on our board and two members of the Virginia Board were charged with coming up with a plan that it would present to our respective boards.
Yeah. How they were necessarily.
I believe there was a committee or, I don't know where we've gone with this. To me, it sounded like a good idea at the time. It was completely informal, all of us who were at, that had a chance to volunteer or be volunteered for, whatever the case may be.
But the point was, and I expressed this earlier today, the point was that action was taken. Negotiating people were chosen and actually some.
I would disagree that action was taken at that meeting.
It really was, because if you look at the minutes that we just approved tonight about that meeting, it's the twenty ninth. It says this negotiating committee was established, and at working sessions, you cannot take action. And by default, you took action by default, by not even voting. That's even more egregious to think. Because action was taken, it was established.
And I, and like I told you earlier, I agree that I feel like if it's going to be a formal, if it's going to be something formal, then there's, then we should discuss it here.
And that's why I brought it back to the agenda tonight.
And that's why we are discussing it. So I, I don't, I guess I just don't want to argue about whether or not there was a committee or whether or not we should have done it or whatever. Let's do it, let's have a discussion, let's make a decision and move on.
And my feeling is, we have a negotiating committee that started this fiscal year, this school year. Why would you, and we've had this argument before, why would you change something now? I think even some of you made those arguments.
This is completely different.
This is different.
About changing something and getting straight.
No, this is, no, 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 this is about.
We already have negotiating teams on both, in both districts.
But the joint powers basically, help me out, Matt, it's.
It was a collaboration.
It was a collaboration.
And a decision was made to put two people and two people together. You can't do that. Let's do it now, Brady. I agree with you. So let's just leave it at that. I still think that was improper action by consensus and by inaction by default. Right, my point here, now, we brought it to the board here now, but now we're talking about all committees through that on the agenda. It's all committees, not just a negotiating committee.
We didn't throw, I guess we did throw a nasty agenda.
Nobody objected, so, and I, otherwise I would have talked about another old business. But anyhow, my feeling is we already have a negotiating committee. If you want some different people for some reason, what would the reasons be?
I guess I'm, I guess I have to say that this informal committee that was formed at the Joint Powers Board was to look at the superintendents of our newly formed district. It wasn't, it was about two from Virginia and two from the Ebbelt Gilbert district.
I totally understand that.
Okay.
But it wasn't a proper decision.
Okay, no, but, but, but we have our own committees to discuss the superintendent in twenty one fifty-four. Virginia has theirs for seven oh six, but we need to form a, or we need to.
I agree that it's, it should be within the Joint Powers Board existing for looking at the structure of that administration piece. That it's different than our negotiation committee and the other negotiation committee. Whether we formalize that, that in this moment, I'm fine with. But I do think that the Joint Powers Board is tasked with, with that piece of it, and that's a pretty darn big piece to be able to, you know, have discussion. And that's why I didn't, I didn't look at it as a negotiation, because there's no comment on pay or benefits or anything. I wanted people to have discussion outside of a large group because we had tried, I had asked for people's thoughts, and people were not comfortable to express them in that setting. So I thought then hopefully they can express them with two and two people, and that discussion can be had. So I don't look at it as any, I mean, they weren't necessarily, they weren't looking at negotiation of benefits, negotiation of pay, negotiation of anything. I wanted a discussion of, and Jeff shared his thoughts in the meeting, Noel did not. So I really wanted to be able to know what those thoughts were, and if that's two and two meeting, then fine.
And also just to add, and I, again, didn't think I saw a committee, didn't say that. It says the superintendent negotiations team made up of two Ebbelt Gilbert board members and two Virginia board members was established. Says nothing about committee. You just said it was a committee call. It didn't say committee in what we approved. It does not say committee.
It says a team was established. That's taking action matter.
It's not a committee. You just said it was a committee.
I'll take it back. I'll say a team, a team was established. That's taking action, okay? We've got a lot of minstrels, but action was taken.
Just make a decision on what we're going to do.
Okay, fine, and if it's going to be a joint powers thing, then that should have been an action item on the agenda at the joint powers, okay? Is, that's all I'm saying. But then all of a sudden, for that action or a decision to be made to create a team at a, at a working session of a collaborative board where no votes are taken, that's my point, okay? You want to do it now, and you want to say, put the blessing of the Ebbelt Gilbert Board to give it to the Joint Powers Board, fine. I just disagree that it just has to be joint powers board members. Because you do, well, again.
It is, it is.
What ends up being it, yes, the two are on the joint powers and the two of.
As it turned out, when no one volunteered, no one else volunteered. Virginia had two people step up and said, we'd like to be on it, who are not joint powers members.
No, they are. Wow.
No, they aren't. Neither of them are.
Correct, you're right. But they, they are the two of the three Virginia established negotiating team. It just happened to be that, okay?
So this board would like to know, would you like to take action to, or not action, or nominate two people to represent that joint?
I would, I would continue to, I mean, I'm the one who actually threw out Director Schuber's name because I do feel like he has a good sense, given his background and experience. So I support without, and I support Director Lauder with her volunteering to do it as well. Actually, I think Yohan nominated.
And I will support that.
Probably.
Just to be clear, Yohan nominated me.
And I will support that to be the.
Go ahead.
Okay, any discussion on that?
All right, and that should also go to the Joint Powers Board as an official act. Which it hasn't yet. It was just in a collaborative meeting, so whoever's helping to make up the joint powers.
I guess.
I would disagree with you.
Yeah.
The Joint Powers Board is tasked with overseeing the construction, not the planning.
Then that makes my case even stronger.
But, so, I guess, Holly, I mean, it would be helpful if you were there. You weren't there. Tom wasn't there, and it does matter when people are volunteering to help move things along and, and then you come up.
If I were there, I would have said this is an improper action.
Thank you, and, but you could have spoken to it, but instead, we're speaking to it after the fact, when something was already done, and then it's, it's easier to criticize from afar all the time, and I'm sorry, this is important stuff, and.
It is important.
We need all the board members there.
To be done the right way.
We, yes, I agree. I agree, and I do know that, I do believe that you would have spoken up at that meeting then and there.
There's not an issue of my presence or my, not my presence there, or at any other board meeting, so don't.
I, I, you can't say there's not issue. There is issue with me.
You're taking a personal issue.
Order, order, order here.
That's not discussion. You're on topic, taking an issue with my personal attendance or not.
I just don't like having discussion over something we already have at a meeting, that you weren't there.
You're on topic in high volume.
It's my issue, all of my issue.
They need order.
I'll consider that an attack on my, my careful, I will.
Kelly? So twelve point, twelve ten is, we got a motion by Director Sather and support by Director Addy to approve Director Schuber and Director Lauder on the negotiated committee for the joint powers. How do we want to word that, board?
Not negotiated.
Or not negotiated.
I would support how it was worded at the meeting, a negotiation team.
Team was established.
Team. Okay, and on twelve ten, we talked about all of the board committees. Jeff, you will have that list, board.
I'll send it.
All right, very good. Any more discussion on that?
And the directions would be, what, for all of us to.
I wrote directions on it.
All in favor?
Well, there's two parts to that. I would like them split because there's two issues.
We've got a negotiating committee.
I've done that.
Or negotiated team, I'll take the committee out of there, and discuss all board committees. So we had the discussion with all board committees with the list that Jeff's going to send us.
I see.
Okay, and then we will fill that out, or we will sign on to whatever committee you want to be on.
I would vote no on the first one. I would vote no on the second one. That's why I want them to be separate. No issues here.
Whoever made the motion should decide what they want that motion to be.
The initial.
I'm just requesting they be separate. As an amendment, I would request that they be separate.
How are you putting them together?
I don't, I don't.
So the initial one was, negotiation team was established at the collaborative board meeting. I support, I would move that we, recommending as the initial recommendation was made up at that evening of Director Schuber and Director Addy, or Director Lauder, sorry. That was the initial statement, the initial motion.
And you got a second?
Yeah, Director Addy's second.
Okay, so that's one motion.
So that's one, can we do that one and then?
Can we get this one, Deb? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then the second part to twelve ten was, Polly?
I think the second part is just understood that that will go up to, we were never, I don't think that takes a motion and.
For the, the, the list.
The, all of the other committees' lists, and that maybe be acted on, or you just think about the next meeting?
Okay, so we will.
No action needed.
No action needed for twelve ten, we'll call it twelve ten B.
Right.
Okay. Moving along, thirteen point oh, old business, thirteen point one, school attorney RFP.
Last time we got, it was mentioned that there were more than six that we sent it to. Deb did retrieve that list and send it up to a bunch more folks. To date, we have, actually, on Friday, we received three more. That was the initial deadline, but we extended that over, waiting for the next batch to respond on the twenty fourth. Well, I guess let's have a conversation. How do you want to, how do you want to beat through those?
Well, first, I have a question. Where else would you?
Whatever was on that list.
On the, on the, over seventy of MSBA list?
Well, it wasn't over seventy, but.
Well, there were over seventy. It's a cola, co- coosa, MSBA.
I've got the list right here somewhere.
So it was sent out to the rest of that list?
It's seventy attorneys.
Seventy, you're right, but there's.
Individual attorneys.
Right.
So it could be six people.
I do, I do, I've got them because there's a lot of overlap.
Right, so they went to, or have them.
Could we do, look at doing a work session to review them?
Sure.
Okay, and then, so that, that was the MSBA coosa list. Did we send it to the Minnesota Bar Association or get newspapers that we might want to send it to? Or how about the, the employment places? I've seen plenty of advertisements for attorneys on Indeed, ZipRecruiter, Glassdoor, Law Crossings, LinkedIn, Simply Hire a Monster?
We sent, we sent, we sent out to the people, I guess, do you recommend, and when we get the responses back, we'll have a study session. You can pick which one.
All right, Tom, glad that it went out tomorrow.
But I would hope that we would have someone retained as soon as possible because I really think we need to have representation at every meeting, at every committee meeting, at every joint meeting, and at every joint powers meeting from this board. Just, our society has gotten out of hand, and we need protection as board members before we're sued by the folks for doing something that was totally innocent.
And with documents and agreements and contracts and. And we have a lot of needs. I mean, there's a big gamut of needs in a school district, all the way from discipline to special ed to construction. That's one of the major areas of interest now and that kind of thing, so I hope we get well, well rounded.
So that being said, there'll be some information coming out, right, Jeff, on the twelve point one, or I mean, thirteen point one?
Yeah, we gave them another week, so.
Okay, all right.
So.
Thirteen point two, we confer where we should on that?
I don't have any updates there.
Have we offered it to the, to the teachers?
Um, informally.
Well, okay, that's our statutory obligation.
I'm all aware.
And we also, we also, okay, we'll put that on old business again, hopefully, in the next board meeting. And we might be past the first quarter already into the second quarter. And then we also spoke, and we had, did put it into a motion or a resolution, but I might want to. We talked about having, although we're not statutorily required, to have the same type of meetings with Hassan because I think it's beneficial, I think it's healthy, and just because we don't have to by law, I think we should.
Who sets that up? The administration?
Administration.
So why are we as board members, I mean, that should be all administrative.
Well, we've talked about it about three times, and it keeps being old business. I just wanted to follow up on it to see if it's being done. It's, it would be very helpful.
Okay, we're going with that. So Jeff, you'll follow up on that?
Jeff, we. I'll watch.
Thirteen point three, the certified letter.
What's the status of that?
You got an update on that?
Oh, yeah, I have a meeting with her tomorrow.
Was the letter sent?
I was just going to ask, did?
Was not sent.
How do you know that?
Because I received a phone call because there's another issue with the same student, the same family, and the same perpetrator. And I don't know if the rest of you got it, but there was a concern that this issue is ongoing. And I, and I asked the person, did you, we talked and we directed, we didn't have a resolution. We directed the administration about three times to send a certified letter. And I asked her, have you gotten it yet? And she said, no.
Did she?
Jeff, has the letter been sent?
We have not sent the certified letter.
Okay, you were instructed to do that by this board, I appreciate it. If you get that done, let's put this to bed once and for all, please.
Yes.
The whole point of the certified letter is to make sure that that was received.
Well, maybe our attorney was directed to do it, and I'm not, I mean, Deb's called him, I've called him.
That's.
Another reason why we should get somebody to.
Do I need to call him? I will call him.
What was it that Mitch said he passed it off? There was a woman that was doing the investigating.
We're at the point of no excuses.
Yeah.
Right.
I can call him.
Yes.
I can call him tomorrow and find out what's going on, Jeff, or you can, or I prefer that you call him and relay the message to me, or have him call me, or whatever, however you want to do that. Okay. Fourteen point four, administrator reporting information.
Well, I've heard a lot of it today. I just want to reread the, I have a meeting at five o'clock to talk about the consolidation board. If you just send, I'll, 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 I'll. On February nineteenth, we have three meetings set up at nine o'clock in the morning in Virginia at the Miners Memorial Building at two o'clock in Gilbert, over in the Media Center, and five o'clock in Ebbelt, on October. On February twentieth, it'll be nine o'clock over at the Gilbert Media Center. Twelve, twelve o'clock is Ebbelt, five o'clock, over at the Miners. We will send our notice of resolution to the paper tomorrow. Hopefully, it'll be published Wednesday or Thursday. I just sent you the committee assignments. We had last year's assignments on there. If you want any change, please send an email to Deb when we make these changes. Uh, last thing for me, we had, we've had two showings of junior high so far. I do not know who either one of them is. I know we have another one coming up on Thursday afternoon.
Now, Jeff, just to, for clarification, the junior high is.
The old junior.
The building over here?
Yep.
Thank you for clarification.
Everybody's thinking it's Gilbert campus.
No.
Did you have any showings at the Gilbert campus?
Yes, we have. We mentioned at the last board meeting.
You just had one? You sent one over there?
One to go.
It's not, that's the grand house. You guys over there? Want to talk about?
No.
We don't?
Thank you, I could have prepared some slides. We're all good, thank you.
Technical difficulties.
So, we'll move along to 15.0, and I'll turn it over to Director Shader.
Okay, so the joint powers board met on February 3rd. Going through, there was quite a few things that we heard from. We approved the high school schematic design, and received an update on the elementary design at this point. We have the teamwork's international update that they provided us. Approved out-of-state travel for the elementary teachers between both districts to be going down to Colorado to observe, looking at the same school that was seen this summer. However, when seen this summer, it was out of session, and this way, there's some questions that our teachers have, where it'd be nice for them to be able to see that in practice and how they make it work down there. So that was approved, along with the approved contractor for the bids for the logging site. And I can't remember which contractor we approved, it was the lowest bid out of Gilbert.
I was...
Thank you. And approved the joint representation agreement as well, and work authorization forms that were free.
All right, that's it? Moving along, 16.0, board member topics, we'll start with you, Tom.
Do we get copies of that stuff? Do we ever get copies?
Yeah, I do. I pass them.
We still have one.
Yeah, we can...
12-1.
Oh.
12-1.
The policies.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Some of the keepers of that.
Okay, so 12, so 12, we have to go back to 12.1, approve the second reading of policies. Can I get a motion to, no, there was a motion by Director Lotter and supported by Director Addy to approve 12-1, because we didn't...
We had a discussion.
Yeah, and we didn't have the copies in front of us, and so, so now we got copies, any discussion?
So, just so I'm clear with this, I do recall going through everything, but the 206 and the 103 are taken from MSBA's policy. And then I know there was some question, I believe that Director Sorkin had brought up when we were reviewing, just to make sure that we're having consistencies within our 510 policy and our handbooks and everything on the complaints.
510 is the extra part of their policy.
Yeah, but then there was like a complaint section in here, so just making sure that we're consistent between our policy and that our handbook matches our policy, if this is the policy that we're going with.
Yeah, we did actually meet on Friday and talked about, we started going through that, we're not done with them.
It's the handbook, and then we have separate discipline policies, too.
Yep.
So we have a motion by Director Lotter, supported by Director Addy. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we just jumped, I was going to ask Kelly a question, and ask for a clarification under her report from the joint powers board, but then Holly was suddenly got this, and I guess I didn't jump in quickly. At the joint powers board, you passed the joint representation agreement, is that my understanding? I just have a question about that. Now, in essence, we did say there's, I would compare, that Virginia School District purchased the spectrum property, right? Now there's, well, there was another agreement, I mean, there's another document about eminent domain and a resolution about going after eminent domain. But now this agreement that you passed, does it basically say that the joint powers board is, come on, I hate to use encumbering, because that's a legal term, but is, the joint powers board is saying that the joint powers board and the joint powers money is going, you're assuming liability for all of that, along with the Virginia School District itself on this, in this situation? Because that's what the agreement to me, and you're saying, yes, yes, and we might have a lawsuit, and we might be doing that, we might have, whatever, joint representation and legal costs and legal fees, so did the joint powers board commit us to that situation when there's three, I mean, joint powers is three out of Gilbert board members, which we aren't in this at all? But now you're...
But the joint powers board is for the development of that land.
Right.
So there's a stake in it for the joint powers board to be able to have that land be developed. So if they're saying, so one of the things that was coming through from, that was brought up in the meeting, was that the, and it was brought up at that collaborative meeting with all of us, is that it was, that there, that there's possible action that they're looking to take that would prevent us from being able to do any development while they're there. That's a joint powers board that we have a stake in on, because we're responsible to be developing and building these schools, and if we can't develop on it, so that was, I mean, so yeah, there's going to be financial pieces to it, but we also have schools to be built, too.
Director Shader put that very well, and I mean, the joint powers board is charged with building these schools, and the party is threatened to seek an injunction to stop that, and we have a stake in seeing that it goes forward.
Just one question I would have, though, would be that the joint powers board is not on title, only the Virginia School District is. And now, going forward, won't the joint powers board contract to buy the Eglith land and the remaining Virginia land? And so the joint powers board is not on title here?
No, it will be.
Maybe you should get on title before you commit to, right?
We certainly have economic interest in that property, and again, it's...
I think how the purchase agreement is worded, it's, it's, or to the, how does it say, the 2154, or the, what's the right word, the word they talked, the...
Or successor.
Or successors. In other words, if it's consolidation by junk till light first, then the joint powers board goes, the joint powers board goes way till light first if...
But now we aren't there, that's what I'm saying, at this point in time, the joint powers board is committing to financial liability for that, that action.
Financial responsibility to move it forward, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And so, like I say, going forward, even before consolidation and a consolidated joint board, oh, it'll be a joint board, it'll be a consolidated board, we have a joint powers board now? Not on the title, they're not, you got my point, you got my point.
It's a legal question.
I get, I do, I understand that, I'm just saying, we have a, we have a responsibility to move the project forward, too.
Right, right.
I mean, I get what you're saying, that we don't have a...
Attorney who represents the joint powers board recommended we do that, and I trust him.
Okay, but the point, other point is, is that money is coming out of joint powers bonding money, and not just, you know, the Virginia money, the Virginia funds. And so that's taking more money away from our project money. And should, should that be, or should, because only Virginia owns that property.
What do we do, sit back and let our construction...
Is that what hospital carriers?
No, I'm not, I'm not...
Is that what we're hoping for?
I'm not suggesting that, but I'm talking about the financial liability, maybe I'm suggesting that it should be on Virginia only. And they're going to move it along, of course, but should that money come out of our bonding funds, that's going to get, because of litigation, possible, and who knows what else? That's going to drain our funds.
I don't, it will drain anything.
I don't either, I think if you do, rather quickly.
Well, maybe you know more than I do, but I mean...
I don't, I just, I just, I'm hope, I got hope.
I hope, I hope.
I got hope, okay? You can't take that away from me.
Okay, fine, but you approve something that's committing you to possible money, bonding money, that, right, that's, you got my answer, that's all I wanted to ask. I got my answer.
I mean, but we committed to bonding money, too, when we offered $250,000 to get out of, for, when we offered that to ERX to be, to vacate the property. I mean, so we recognize, I mean, there wasn't, I don't believe there was issue with that, I mean, so it's not like we're doing something that hasn't been what we've been doing all along, we did that this past...
And we committed bonding money to the engineering and the development of those sites that will make the legal, any legal bills small.
That's part of what we need to do, you need to do with the engineering, you have to do that, this to me, I do.
But we have to secure the, to be able to build.
I got my answer, thank you.
So 15.1, are we done talking about 15? Okay, 16.0, board member topics, Tom?
I just have one item. A while back, probably three, four months ago, the board indicated that we were going to go ahead and support our local merchants. Okay. I was just looking here on the last checks that were written out for the last few months. We spent $540.55 with a grocery store in Virginia. Now, we have our grocery store in Eglith, and when it comes time for the kids to raise money and everything, you know, where they have a car wash, you have a parking lot here in Eglith, yep, we bought peanut butter, churro, eggs, and puppets in Virginia, just a few of those. And so we were not, the board said, yes, we should support the local, and you see, but we're not.
I don't know that to be, I don't know what, I don't know what that stuff is for.
I mean, we tried to, and I, the point mistaken, I mean, we tried to put on resources to can, in that particular instance, our, our fax teacher happens to live there, and we're asking her to take time that we don't pay her for, to go get that stuff and bring it over there, and it's the most convenient for her, so I mean, we can maybe choose to pay her extra hours to go down here, or we can be okay with what's going on. I mean, there isn't enough time in her day for her to go grocery shopping, so she's doing that outside of her paid day. I'm not saying you're wrong, Tom, I'm just telling you why it's...
They pay taxes, we should do some...
Tom, I agree with you 100%, I'm just telling you why it's...
I understand that, but can we recall a solution here?
How often does this happen, Jeff?
A few hours, I mean.
I mean, how often does she go and do grocery shopping?
Once a month, do you know, once a month?
Once a month. You look into, that, the teacher, I have to ask her if she can, maybe look into...
Well, or is there any way for IG to possibly prep everything ahead of time, if she's able to just send them what is needed, what items are needed, where then they can prep everything ahead of time, where she's actually not walking through physically, having to shop for it, to expedite her time, too? Because I, I get it, and I would not be, I get the fact, and I would not, I wouldn't task our administration with pushing, pushing it, if she is volunteering to do this on her own time, because the alternative can say, I'm not finding someone else to do it. But yeah, there's ways to maybe make it more feasible for her, that IG would possibly be willing to do that. Because I agree, they're great partners, and they always support our school functions, and, I mean, they were huge with PTA stuff all the time, and so...
It must be a possibility of full 12 order, and I'm just picking it up.
Yeah, I mean, just, maybe, yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
You can go ask her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Another question might be, though, that, then, why is a teacher volunteering time enough, having, maybe using prep time, which would be paid time, and maybe we could work out a scenario where she can have a lot of time?
That would be something for the administration to figure out, I would think.
Or pay extra, like traffic teachers get a little bit extra, or some extra stipend for doing that on her own time, so...
Jeff and Angie, can you figure that out, maybe?
Some other options.
Yeah, some other options for her. You good, Tom?
I will.
She's, she's over at the Gilbert campus this year, this semester.
Polly?
Nothing. I have, I don't know if I even, I can't even remember when the unveiling of the new school colors were, I don't know if we had a board meeting since then.
January 23rd.
Yeah, not, I was just gonna say, just in case. It was quite fun, thank you, Jeff, for the drops on me and hats, that my clips will enjoy them. But I just thought that was cool, that's all I got to say.
Now that you mention that, who paid for all those shirts and cats and things?
Virginia.
Virginia, general fund, or the, or the community?
So I'm done, so I'm done talking, go ahead.
So, so mine was actually part of that, because I did hear some things get pushed back, where, where different community organizations were being asked of money to pay that and support that, and I wish I would have known ahead of time about that, because I, you know, I get that that agency had helped with a lot of the branding and things like that, but I just, I wish I would have known a little bit more ahead of time on that there was going to be a cost associated with that, and where that money was coming from. Because I feel like after, what was reported to me was money was asked after the fact, like, hey, are you going to help pay this bill? And it was over in Virginia, and so I just, I don't think that that was appropriate.
Do we know how much it was? The total?
I, I don't know for sure, the individual, I want to say through like 15,000.
I said no.
Huh?
I said no.
Okay. Because I just, I feel like, yeah, like after the, you just can't, I, I don't, so I wish I would have known a little bit about that, I, waiting...
And you're right, it wasn't that I was opposed to it, it was just...
No.
We were led, led to believe that this stuff was being taken care of, and then last minute, oh, by the way.
And that was, that was my understanding, that it was being taken care of, and then all of a sudden, there's a bill afterwards, and I just, I think that's ridiculous. But then the other part, too, is I, I hear a lot of people waiting to buy local, I'm patiently waiting to pop in, I'm seeing some different designs coming out for different apparel, so to really promote buy local, and I know that was another piece that really hit people hard, is making sure that our local vendors are able to support the new school, and, you know, are able to help that. So reminding everyone, you can contact either the superintendents at either district or the JPEG, there, it is not copyrighted, and I continue to let people know in our community about it, so...
I agree, both supporting local for the, for the apparel as well, I've been trying to do that myself. As far as anything else, I don't think I have anything else at this time.
I think the debate was extremely well received, I think a lot of credit goes to a lot of people, but particularly JoJo and Josh, Lampa, the activities directors, they know they put a lot of extra time into that, and I know they both have dealt with certain things that probably weren't their PDs when they took the jobs because of that, and I think both the rollout, and the name, and the mascot, and the colors, combined with the activities consolidation plan have been extremely well received, and I think that's one thing, like Jeff said, I remember back in July, the whole sports thing, the athletics is just an emotional thing, that could have sidetracked us, and it hasn't, and, like I say, credit goes to a lot of people, most notably JoJo and Josh, and what they've come up with. And I was thrilled to play a small part in the event.
Nice job.
And kind of eat things, including welcoming our neighbors from north of the bridge.
Way up here, just from what I got at my house, my, my son's eighth grade, very excited for the, for what's ahead, so it was well done also, mentally.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Support... About my director Lotter, leaving adjourn.